...policies are in Abington Township. But I believe the political structure here is powerful enough to do anything once. I've learned that in three weeks. Now, if Chief Corcoran was a policeman in Philadelphia, he could not return back to the rank of police captain, nor would he enjoy civil service status. Under the civil service regulations of Philadelphia, he would have to be appointed or promoted through the civil service system to be a chief. That did not happen in Abington. He was appointed by the majority of the commissioners, and he serves at your pleasure, that is my opinion. But you're a capable city solicitor. Mr. Waters will have to make that distinction between whether he's civil service or appointed. In my humble opinion, he was appointed and he does not enjoy civil service status.
Who could possibly be responsible for any of these?
Well, I said that I would not... I'm not going to get into names. It'll depend on your questions. You ask anything you want, then I will answer. And I'll name names if I have to. But I won't be impolite and refuse to answer your question. So this distinguished body this evening rests with you. No, no, I realize that a man's career is at stake, and I tried to be as kind as I could. But from this moment on, you want to know names, you ask me the questions.
Could I reserve for... may I ask a question later? No, I would like to ask a question. As subsequent, I would like to reserve my right for one more question at a later time. Do I get that? May I have that prompt?
Having interviewed many people, one statement that came out saying that many things have been said, checking for accuracy, for truth, or whatever, was never followed through with that. Is this part of the procedure, or you've seen enough or heard enough?
Commissioner, if I was to stay here to investigate everything that was told me by people and some of the commissioners, I would become a lifelong resident of Abington. I said in that report that we didn't have sufficient time to investigate the truth. Investigate. But in my opinion, as a professional policeman and as a former mayor and politician, the things that I heard, I reached a conclusion. And I know... I'm supposed to know a little bit about everything on your mayor of a large city. And I think I do. But when it comes to being a policeman or a police chief, I will take back seat to no one in this country. I gave my opinion. And I believe that my final... the bottom line was, with all the compassion that I could generate... And it's not for Frank Rizzo, or the commissioners, or Chief Corcoran, who I hold with... I have some sympathy for him and his family. The bottom line is that the people of Abington depend on this police department. And let me just say, in all my interviews, I talked to a lot of people, and the most of the police people. And the caliber of men and women who serve in the Abington Police Department are unequaled, in my opinion. They're dedicated people. And the only thing that is wrong with the Department of Abington, they had no leadership, no direction, no compassion, no understanding from Chief Corcoran and some of the people who served with him. And if I... If I were to go further, and I told you that the questions would be answered, I tried to be kind and compassionate. In fact, a lot of people were surprised. Frank Rizzo really is, and tries to be. And I've done that all my life. And I do hold some compassion for Chief Corcoran. But I said that I would be guided by the questions here this evening, and I'm not going to duck any. Not only is the Abington Police Department sad in all the leadership qualities that are needed, but the administration, no fault of the men who serve in it. If I was degraded, I would have to grade it poor. By the way, Mr. Waters and Mr. Herman, who by the way, both were very cooperative with me and very understanding, and they were a little bit in the middle in this one here because they're both supporters of Chief Corcoran. I can't fault them for that. I'm not here as an adversary of anyone. I was paid, I was hired, and by the way, I wonder, you know... I was willing... I volunteer. I was willing to come back if I could have got that amnesty and sit with Chief Corcoran for a couple of weeks to a month and try to direct him on how to run a police department. He's a very intelligent young man. He's well schooled. I think that might have been one of his problems. I think he spent so much time away from Abington and other endeavors that that might have short-stopped him a little. But I was willing to come up and try. I was going to talk to Mr. Waters and Mr. Herman if I was able to get amnesty for the people, by the way, and I will discuss that if you care to. And if I could have... And I think that, you know, I did try, and the dislike, the paranoia in this surroundings is so deep that good men looked at me and said, "Frank Rizzo, if anybody could get us to do it, you could." But it just couldn't work. The minute you left here, they told me things changed the short time we were here, my colleagues and I. And they were beginning to say good morning to each other. You know, there's an element required in any leadership position, whether it be being a police chief, or a solicitor, or a manager, or running any business. There's a human element involved. Where you just... you're not dealing with robots. Where you have to be understanding. You know, it's very easy when you're a police chief to be all-powerful with the men who hold lower rank. That's easy. You've got to gain the respect of your men by taking on people with more authority than you have when they try to interfere in your operation. I say this to you, I served with many men who would not have tolerated at five minutes some of the things that were attempted. I can tell you this without any bravado, could have never happened with Frank Rizzo. So, if you have any other question, or...
You did say, yes, that you individually confidentially pulled each other...
Yes, not everyone. I would say, Richard, about 60 of them. It was about, I would say, 60 to 65. And I would say the other 10 I talked to on the telephone. And I guarantee them that we would not ever divulge their names.
Is considered to be covered by civil service. You indicated that with your understanding that he served as the fudge of this board. Frankly, that was our opinion too, for a while there. But are you aware that the solicitor has since ruled that after having researched the case law, that the chief is, under the first-class township code, considered to be under civil service and cannot be removed or demoted without cause?
Well, so you know, that decision rests with the township authorities. I do not agree with Mr. Waters. I said, if you remember, I prefaced my remarks by saying, "The political structure up here is so strong that it could be done if they wanted to do it." But in my humble opinion, after reading all the laws, and Chief Corcoran himself, I asked him specifically, "Are you covered by civil service?" He said, "No, sir." So I read the civil service regulations very thoroughly. I'm not a lawyer, Mr. Waters. But in my humble opinion, Chief Corcoran is not covered by the civil service regulations. But again, all you politicians sitting up there, that decision is yours, not mine.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, I have one question. Mr. Rizzo, in your report you've indicated that you do not verify the many accusations or stories against Chief Corcoran. And my question is, if you found these accusations, information, or stories to be verified and found not to be correct, would you change your mind in your report?
Absolutely not. I learned long ago, you never write a letter, you never tear one up. As a professional policeman, I sat there, and so you'll know, most of the things in that report, Chief Corcoran admitted to me. And I was kind in that report, and again, I repeat that. And I think I owe something to the people of Abington that... I was only here to study the problem between morale and chief. But I mentioned the efficient operation of the Abington Police Department, with no fault at all to the men. I could not believe what I saw. There was no administrative ability at all. I'll just give you some examples. Abington, by the way, is well-pleasured. It has more policemen per square mile than most communities in this part of the country. 60,000 population, round figures, Abington. Have 10 sector cars. And I hope there's no burbers in the room. If they are, I hope that they change it quickly before they... That's the reason I was reluctant to speak out. I don't want some of the criminals to find out it's so easy and come back. The only thing that stops them are the dedicated men who serve in a department, and they're not getting the direction they need. There's 10-sector cars. On a change of shift, the whole 10 cars come in at one time. Unbelievable. They should have been staggered. They should have been split. Five come in at half hour, the other five, so that there's coverage to respond. Something happened, you all had to come out of headquarters. I get into the operation, I... No police work. Went into some of the training programs. A lot of men go to school in Abington, policemen. Costs a lot of money. Last year, they spent $39,000. And I found out they go to school, but they don't come back and tell anybody else what they learned. This is, you know, training policemen is a most important part of command. That's the reason you have lieutenants, captains, and sergeants. They're supposed to come back, the men who are sent, and train the men who can't go to school. You can't send all your men to school. There is no, very little training. I was amazed that there was no tactical unit in the township of Abington. A tactical unit for you laypeople is a unit. And it doesn't have to be a lack of one, but on every quick zone, there should be men who are trained in the use of automatic weapons, shotgun, tear gas, a negotiator. 95% of hostage takers, or where you have a guy runs berserk and kills eight, nine people, what can happen in any community? You have to have a negotiator, someone trained, to talk to him and attempt to talk him out. But if that don't happen, then you have to be available with the proper manpower and equipment to try to take him before he harms anyone else or harms any member of the police department. I was shocked. I talked to supervisors. I talked to sergeants. Were you ever trained in the use of automatic weapons, tear gas? No. I said, "What would happen tonight if someone up at the mall went berserk and took cover in one of these buildings?" He said, "I'd call the lieutenant." So I asked the lieutenant, he'd call the captain. I asked the captain, he'd call the chief. Now, it was unbelievable to me that men were not trained for that type of an emergency. I was amazed that official commendations... This is something important, and it's also important politically to the people who serve in the political machinery. A policeman performs an act of valor. This policeman, and it happens, and it was one of the greatest days of my career, when I received him and when I gave him out. Policeman brings his family, his children. We love to see their father honored. My dad's a policeman, he's a brave man. Most kids say that. I said that about my dad, and I meant every word of it. Have a little luncheon, invite the township people, invite the commissioners, have some photographs taken. The chief didn't like them, they mailed them to them. So I could go on and on and on. And I said in my report that I saw things that I could not believe exist. That's true. So it shows you that no matter where you've been and how far you've went, there's always more to learn. And I just could not believe what I saw here. A police department that was floundering. And let me tell you one more time, I don't want you to go home and feel uneasy. The only thing that's saving youth as residents are the men who ride them cars every night. Despite all...
You stated in your report that throughout the interviewing, you looked for facts seen by the interviewee, but throughout the process, you received subjective information. You repeated that several times in the report. I don't understand why you didn't use your expertise in police matters to dig deeper in an attempt to ascertain the facts. And I thought I just heard you say that the facts wouldn't make a difference if you had additional facts that would not influence your report. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Commissioner.
Could you talk further about why you didn't use your expertise to dig deeper for facts?
I don't think I said I didn't use my expertise. I said I just didn't have the time to investigate. And we didn't. We were here almost three weeks. And we were in a basement. I feel sorry for guys that are put in solitary confinement now.
We meet there occasionally.
Well, that's something that ought to be improved on. And thank God you had Harry running around that building.
Well, I hate to be repetitious, but I am going to ask you again. You didn't think that facts were important? That you were satisfied with subjective information?
I was satisfied with what I heard as a professional. I really didn't have to do any studying, any investigating. But if you want to bring me back, the field be higher the next time. If you want me to come back and do that in depth, I don't know whether I would or not. I'm only throwing out a little chest here. I tell you that after three weeks in this township, talking to many, many people and watching the operation of a police department, that I didn't have to do much investigating. I just looked. You take, I mentioned the sector cars. That's elementary. We talked about the schooling. Can you believe a chief of police? I asked you, and I told you that your questions were going to make me talk, unless I'm the kind of a guy who don't run from questions or anything else, if I can say that respectfully. Can you imagine a police chief never attending a roll call? Can you imagine a police chief, a police chief that never had a staff meeting, including sergeants? Very rarely. Can you imagine with all the changing laws every day? Even lawyers can't keep up with the changing laws. That men who are supposed to go out on the street and make split decisions, they don't have the time that a lawyer has. How do we expect men to go on the street and do their job when they don't know, unless they read it themselves? And by the way, I listened to some of the men who were well-read and well-learned on the law. They did it on their own. So if you're asking me, Commissioner, that I investigated, I would have to bring in some of the commissioners. Some of the commissioners said things to me that made my head boggle.
Would you like to be more specific about that?
Yeah, some of the things that the commissioner said to me, I couldn't believe they were coming from an elective office. Do you believe there is a town's guard in Abington Township? Yes, I do, positively. I'll tell you, you know, the chief told me a story. They did not respond. Went into his office. The following morning, he came in, and one policeman was there who he said was in that group. And the policeman said to him, "Good morning." The chief went back to him and said, "Look, don't you ever say 'good morning' to me." I could not believe it. There was no attempt to heal. There was no attempt to join hands. Anytime he gets promoted, there are people who are upset that maybe you got it because you did this, that, or the other. "We want the war against Germany and Japan. We made up..." "They're giving them money. Can we help them rebuild?" I said, "What could run so deep that could prevent men from saying 'good morning' to each other?" And if the chief was intelligently, if he was intelligent, he would have said "good morning" to that policeman. But none of that happens in Abington. It's unbelievable. And I tell you this, I was going to leave it for a closing statement. But you people are the people who elect these people. And I only can recommend to this distinguished group. But if you hold it short, all I can say is that if it's not my report, maybe certain things are done to bring a change in the leadership of that Abington Police Department, or you're all going to suffer severely. My last and probably my most important question, Mr. Rizzo, is what is your opinion of the operation and efficiency of the Abington Township Police Department? I think that, Commissioner, I won't be late for that, but I'll just give you an answer. If I had to grade it, it would be graded somewhere between very poor and poor, with no reflection on the men, only on the leadership. It wasn't even needed, the scheduled change. There's no need for that scheduled change. Police chief would have just dropped some men back from each tour. Simple. Get volunteered. No problem. You take the incident of this pamphlet, "Change the Chief." Not to change the chief, not to shift. It wasn't nothing. A smart police chief would have ignored it and brought him in the next day. Made a lot of friends in Abington while I was here, and I consider them people that I'd want them to stay friendly with. They're good people, and their only concern was trying to remove the causes that was causing a great police department to separate. And some of them were even fearful that might turn to violence one day. And I tell you, I've been there when it happened. It could have very easily erupted into... They carry firearms. They're guys that are not afraid to fight. But I admire the membership of the Abington Police Department. Because I'll tell you this, with no disrespect to no one, they took it longer than I would take it.
Are you aware, Mr. Mayor, that under a 1981 case, a chief under first-class township code would not necessarily be covered under civil service protection at the Civil Service Commission, whereas here, it was not involved in the selection process?
I'm completely counsel. I'm not a lawyer. I try once and I'll never be one without a license. But I know the laws, and I've read them. And I'll tell you one more time, but it's up to the powerful politicians who sit here. The Chief Corcoran does not have civil service status.
The 1981 case said that. If the commissioners follow your recommendations, Mr. Mayor, what timeframe do you think should be employed in selecting a new chief?
Immediately. I would just like to add one thing there, Commissioner Fox. If Chief Corcoran, at the powers that they decide to restore to the rank of captain with civil service status, I suggest that he be placed in a position where he has no command responsibility. He does have potential, but he needs a chief of police who knows what he's doing to instruct him for a while. So he should be put in charge, for instance, of staff services, computers, statistics, crossing guards. But that, I would recommend very strongly. And I believe that a new police chief would do that without even being told.
Thank you. We have two other commissioners. Commissioner Wagner, your last question, please, your last question.
Hi. Generally, as I have seen police departments, and from little I do know, that the chief... The chief of police is, yes, public relations, et cetera. And even undercutting, it's the captain who actually does the day-to-day operations. For instance, Mr. Eboy has sent a letter to the commissioners. And in there is stated that the captain had delegated the people in a non-tactical way for observance.
What's your question, Commissioner?
My question is, if it's the day-to-day operations, it certainly is the captain of police who's responsible for the kind of...
No, no way, Commissioner.
No way.
The captain of police only is a vehicle. The chief makes the policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Bloom? Thank you. At this particular time, I'd like to call on the Police Association Sergeant Quinn.
My name is Sergeant Quinn. I'm employed with the Abington Township Police Department.
Address?
Roswell.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sergeant Quinn.
I'd like to know if I can add... I'd like to know if I can give a brief statement, I will ask the question.
I can't hear you, Sergeant.
I'd like to know if I can give a brief statement rather than ask a question, and also, the second portion would be to introduce our attorney, who would ask the question.
Sergeant, I... Okay. The policy was that we would have questions answered, Sergeant, you understood that? I would hate to get into a citizen debate on long-drawn-out statement, could you, in a couple of questions, sort of summarize your statement there, as a question, could you summarize the question?
I guess to cut through a whole page, bottom line is, if you're going to make a decision up there about this chief of police, I would ask you to expedite it, possibly tonight, so we can go home with our lives, so the chief can go home with his life. You owe us that much, you owe the chief that much too, like Mr. McDonald said, yeah, we do owe him something. Possibly he wants to get along with his side businesses, possibly his teaching skills, right? We would like to get back to doing police work, that's what we're here to do.
Thank you. Sergeant Quinn, you have the attorney?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Edmund Tereyak, who showed up here.
My name is Edmund Tereyak, I'm from Wayne, the mayor. Mr. Mayor, if the commissioners tonight vote to discharge the chief of police, and if the chief of police does file a lawsuit and claims under civil service that he has a right to his job, would you be willing to come to court and tell the judge why he needed to be fired?
Not knowing what to do was another small part of that equation, but the whole thing can be solved immediately if the commissioners follow the recommendations that I made in my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any other member from the Police Association? Any other member? Any other question from the Police Association?
Corcoran does have some potential, I think the Chief Corcoran needs a police chief who has been around, who not only read the books, but was involved with men and women, and knows how to get along. So I think the Chief Corcoran, under the right chief, maybe a half a dozen years from now, could be a chief, but he's got to be taught, he needs a lot of, not a lot of teaching, Colonel, but a captain, as a staff, and a staff services, where he has no line of command, I think Chief Corcoran could do very well.
The number of the commissioners, including Ms. Wagner, who I think is running for higher office, has challenged the mayor...
Just put a question to the mayor, okay?
Okay. Has challenged the mayor on his investigative abilities, or the time he took to investigate. And the question that came to my mind is, Mr. Rizzo has been here for approximately three or four weeks, commissioners have been here, why couldn't they find out the same information that you did? Thank you.
Well, I think that, really, basically, I interviewed all the commissioners, and there were pro-corporate commissioners, and there were anti-corporate commissioners, and I found them all to be, most to be reasonable people. I know that some of them said some things when I wasn't there, and I've been waiting tonight for them. But I met them all and talked to them all, and with few exceptions, and there's a couple of exceptions, respectfully, on here, that I would like to do battle with. But in the majority, all of them, were very, very kind and understanding and supportive of the chief.
Justification did they give?
Let me finish, I want to get to that. Now, there's five commissioners on this board that want the Corcoran removed, in my opinion, they were the well-read, the well-learned, and they had to, they knew it. But they, they knew what had to be done, but they were outnumbered. And, with no disrespect for the others, Chief Corcoran is a very pleasant, he's a convincing talker, and I think he snowed a couple of them, but he couldn't snow a professional policeman, okay?
Thank you.
In view of the fact that Chief Corcoran was elected, appointed by the commission, and all these problems, either he was handed down to him or developed, whatever, how are we gonna, what would you recommend we do to prevent this reoccurrence, since I imagine somebody's going to be appointed again?
First of all, the politicians should not pick the police chief. Number one. And you have to make absolutely certain that you pick police chiefs who would sit on this oral board. From within the state of Pennsylvania, there's some real competent police chiefs right in this area. By the way, I spoke to all of them, I spoke to judges, I spoke to police chiefs, I spoke to politicians, and I know exactly what was going on. So you have to select some police chiefs, and for the goodness of this township and the policemen who serve in it, I'd be willing to sit on that panel. To help select the next police chief of Abington. The most important thing, the most important thing, the politicians can't pick him.
Any other citizens come forward, please?
On page eighteen of your report, you state that the Abington Police Chief should not be involved in any outside business or occupation, bearing in mind that Mr. Corcoran has an overall leader.
Mrs. Quinn, I believe it detracted from the chief's main purpose in being the police chief of Abington. He was involved with the outfit called Corcoran Security, another one called Bastard, he taught at Community College, he taught at Temple, I don't know if they were both together, I think he left Community and went to Temple. No police chief can do that and be an effective and efficient police chief, not only for the time involved away from the township, like Monday morning, when I arrived here, I didn't want him to greet me, but if I was the police chief and someone was coming into my police department to do a study, I would have been here that Monday morning, I would have called Temple and told them to get someone else. I'm going to just repeat it one more time, and this is the last one I'm going to answer. The police chief is not protected by civil service, okay? Now, the powers that be want to do that, they got the political clout, maybe, to do it, the civil service could waive the requirements and restore him to police captain, but I'm sure, in my mind, I see some pretty capable people that are commissioners, I see one of my, an attorney here on the end, Mr. Fox, and I see a couple more here, I see, I know the Police Association, I just met their attorney, and I know the determination of that Police Association and the Fraternal Order of Police, you can believe me, that won't happen too quickly, and if it does, the political machinery will work and work well.
Please do not adjourn until I get a chance.
Commissioner, I want to thank you, Mr. President, all the commissioners.